Welcome to the General Election Candidate Forum for the City Council of Puyallup, District 2, Position 2. I'm Noel Hagens, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, I welcome the candidates and audience to this community candidate forum. At this time, I'd like to introduce Maureen Fife from the Affordable Housing Consortium, who will give an opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Maureen Fife. I am the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, but this year I am also Chair of the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. The consortium is a membership group made up of housing, affordable housing developers, housing providers, professionals in the arena, architects, bankers, developers, engineers, that all have the goal of seeing more affordable housing built in our community. So, thank you so much for joining us. It's been our pleasure at the consortium to partner with League of Women Voters every year for these very important candidate forums. So, I will turn it over now to the really important stuff, the candidates. So, thank you for joining.
Thank you, Maureen. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone aged 16 or older can become a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website at www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. In ballot order, the candidates for Puyallup City Council, District 2, Position 2, are Dennis King and Joe Colombo. This year, the general election is November 2nd. Ballots were mailed out on Friday, and if you are a registered voter, you should have received your ballot. If you're not yet registered or have moved, you may register at vote.wa.gov before October 25th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM on November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County website, www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Questions have been prepared by the Affordable Housing Consortium. We invite live audience questions via text to 253-906-4734. Questions must be directed to both candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Terry Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let the candidates know when they have 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Candidates, please stay on gallery view so you can see me and the timekeeper, Terry Baker. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourselves when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask both of you to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things include addressing the issues, not other candidates or their positions. That is not your opponent or your opponent's position. Please confirm by giving this a thumbs up. I see one thumb up. Two thumbs up. Thank you both. Okay, great. Thank you. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, both candidates can make a one-minute closing statement. So, the order of the two-minute statements is Dennis King and then Joe Colombo. Dennis, will you give us your opening statement, please?
Hi there. My name is Dennis King, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. It's always a pleasure to be here and in this forum. You guys do a great job. For those of you that don't know who I am, I've been a community leader and a business owner in our city all my life. My family, we've been here in Puyallup for over 50 years. And coming into the city council race wasn't something that I ever had in the back of my mind in my lifetime. However, when the time came to run, I thought, if not me, then who? And we are, my wife and I, we made the decision to to go into this essentially together, and I wouldn't have done it without her support as well. And we've had a business here in Puyallup within my family for over 50 years. And Puyallup just has a special place in our heart. And having lived here my entire life, you know, it's something that we just want to make sure that the rudder on this ship that we call City Council continues on the path in the right direction that we want to see here in Puyallup as a community and bring people together. So, thank you so much for having me, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dennis. Joe, your opening statement, please.
Hi, everyone. Excuse me. I'm Joe Colombo. Thank you very much for holding this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you today. For those that may not know me, I moved to the Puyallup area in the early 80s when my father was transferred to McCord Air Force Base. My mother was a public school teacher in the Bethel School District. I graduated Rogers High School and was active in Key Club and the Marching Band. In fact, I was at Spark Stadium in downtown Puyallup the day that it opened. A little bit about my professional background. I worked in the IT department for Liberty Mutual Insurance, and I'm a former credit counselor at the nonprofit Consumer Credit Counseling Services of Seattle. In fact, I'd like to bring those skills to city budget sessions to make sure that we improve fiscal responsibility as we look at funding some of the projects that need to be done around the city. I have three core values that I want to share and hope to bring to the city council. Those are integrity, transparency, and accountability. For me, integrity means following the rules, but also working to change those that are unfair. Second is transparency. My pledge is to stay in touch with everybody and share everything that I can throughout my campaign as well as while serving on council. And third is accountability. I'll keep you informed, seek your feedback, and walk my talk with specific proposals that I'm working to develop. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, the audience can text questions to 253-906-4734. The candidate order will rotate with each question. We'll start with Dennis. Dennis, your first question is, please offer your view of what should be the city's role in addressing the shortage of affordable housing for residents and for providing shelter and services for its homeless individuals. Dennis and then Joe.
Well, as we know, you know, obtaining a home in Puyallup is very difficult with the prices that we have seen just in the past year go up. Home values in Puyallup have gone up 20%. And even though that's a good thing, it can also create challenges for many families looking for a home who are priced out of the market here in Puyallup. There are ways to assist those families through existing programs such as FHA, VA, Veteran Assistance, and as well as USDA loans in some cases. As far as the homeless situation that we are facing here in our city and across the county and essentially across the entire state, I want to come into city council with a homeless service accountability approach. And that is, I want to see homeless services here in our city and throughout the county be held accountable to get those up and out of the predicament that they are in by showing empathy and compassion. Obviously, it's a must, but nobody wants to see somebody freezing in the cold or dehydrated in the heat. We want to be able to hold those that are offering services accountable, and we want to be able to do that in a correct manner.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, Joe, you have the same question, please.
All right. Thank you. Well, one of the things that the city could do, they've recently created something called the Puyallup Housing Action Plan, which is available online to read. There's some great information in there, and some of the suggestions that I'm behind are things like the pilot infill program, finding ways to shorten the permitting process so that we can build more affordable housing quicker. And then we need to increase available properties to residents. You know, and we can do this with partnership with some of the different groups out there, such as the Pierce County Affordable Housing Council, partnering with them, because, you know, quite frankly, it is the right thing to do. Getting and keeping people in housing has worked to make life better since basically the beginning of time. And so, this is something that we should do. Affordable housing does prevent homelessness, but the strategies and funding for the two topics are different. So, what I'm looking at doing is something called Functional Zero Homelessness, where we get those people off the streets that want help. We're currently running a hotel model where we've got 20 beds on the north end of the city. And then we're also contracting out to 10 beds in Tacoma with the Salvation Army. I want to find a way to continue this program, but we do need to find a way to reduce costs, because right now it's being funded through Cares Funding. So, if we can find a way to make it a little bit more economical, I think we've got a winning solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, you're first for this next question. Please describe your view of how Pierce County municipalities should coordinate their efforts to provide affordable housing and homeless services.
Well, one of the things that we could do for affordable housing is to, again, work with groups that are knowledgeable on this, such as the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. I'm very excited about shape. Pierce County is investing in affordable housing in a big way, and I think that the city of Puyallup should be all in. We can also partner with some other cities. We want to have a public-private partnerships across municipal boundaries to create large affordable projects. This would mean partnering with places like Edgewood, that's close by to Puyallup. We also need to take a look at developing incentives. We should investigate all avenue to make construction faster and easier for developers and builders so that we can get more homes on the market for people. Some of the homelessness things that we've had going on, we have, there's a 2021 Comprehensive Plan and homelessness. Some great things in there with emergency shelter, supportive shelter, economic development with job training. And, but we do need to collaborate. This is a regional issue that we need to work on, and we need to reach out to those places that are experts and know what they're doing and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, your response, please.
Yeah. I think Puyallup's approach was initially to link on to the Tacoma's program briefly, but decided to offer their own program through a partnership with Catholic Community Services. Right now, the city has approximately 20 units available and has recently discussed adding more. I think that's a possible good situation for us to move into. There are two things, though, that I would like to consider. Anytime we discuss adding more housing, the efficiency of the existing system, as well as bringing on more partners to offer services that may be lacking here in Puyallup. And lastly, regarding that, would be a better coordination with the county. I also believe that we should put together a homeless summit to better coordinate the efforts being made by nonprofits, developers, homeless advocates, the county, and its municipalities. I want to see all the municipalities in Pierce County come together. I think part of the problem is a lack of communication between all of these entities. A summit would help provide clarity and better understanding and coordination to have a greater impact on this issue. I would also hope it serves as a starting point for a greater Pierce County effort to assist homelessness and provide affordable housing.
Thank you, Dennis. And Dennis, you're first for the next question. Cities in Washington State and elsewhere try various policies to address their shortage of affordable housing. Restate and explain your view of establishing a local source of funding to preserve or create affordable housing, such as a housing trust fund financed with a sales tax or property levy.
Well, the housing trust fund financed with a sales tax or property levy is quite complex of an issue. I would be willing to look at funding sources if it made sense for everyone involved. But like I mentioned before, you know, having a collaborative effort with everybody in our county, the burden shouldn't be or should be spread across the entire community and the county and not just on one group or city in this instance.
Thank you. And Joe, the same question, please.
Yeah, so using available funding for affordable housing makes good business sense, because studies have shown that preventing homelessness and increasing affordable housing makes for better outcomes in like grades for students. It reduces teen pregnancies, reduces incarceration rates, and many other markers for healthy communities. So, it's not only good business sense, but it's the best for families, and it's our duty to use taxpayer dollars properly.
Thank you. Joe, you're first for this question. What is your view of inclusionary zoning requirements for market rate developers to include affordable housing units in their market rate mix? Do you favor these requirements, and why or why not?
So, inclusionary zoning is a very powerful tool, and it should be used when it's appropriate. So, it's one of those items where we need to analyze and take a look at the existing communities and the neighborhoods when the builders come in to create housing, and needs to be looked at very carefully of whether this is a situation where it should and could be used or a situation where it shouldn't. But it is a very powerful tool that we need to look at and consider.
Thank you. Dennis, the same question, please.
Yeah, and this is really part of my affordable real estate concept. I would just much prefer a carrot rather than a stick approach regarding this. And by that, I want to be able to see developers come in and be able to have a streamlined process to get these developments built. And I, like my opponent said, you know, I'm in agreeance that there is a time and place and purpose and to make sure that these developments are put in a correct or put in with a correct matter in regards to where they are being developed. And we don't want to see neighborhoods in general get too dense where traffic becomes New York City. Obviously, we're facing a lot of traffic issues through downtown already, but we want to make sure that we do it economically as well as in a way that benefits the entire community.
Thank you. To the audience again, if you have housing-related questions for these candidates, you can text to 253-906-4734. Joe, you're first for this question. And we've talked a little bit about it, but we're going to be talking a little more. Joe, do you favor incentives to elicit the voluntary willingness of private developers to include affordable housing units in their market rate mix? Why or why not?
Yes, so multifamily housing tax exemptions, completing completing off like property infrastructure, like sewers, sidewalks, and other incentives. Those can be useful to help developers make projects pencil out. So, when the developers partner with municipalities, it makes affordable housing stock happen faster. And I think the city of Puyallup should investigate all options for this.
Thank you. And Dennis, the same question, please.
Regarding the same thing, you know, I'm right there with Joe on this one as well. And, you know, incentives are probably the best tool we have in the toolbox for accomplishing the task or creating affordable housing. And my opponent took the words right out of my mouth, so excellent on that one.
Okay. Dennis, you're first for this question.
Sure.
Please describe any other policy you would favor for the city of Puyallup to preserve or increase affordable housing for its residents as well as shelter and services for residents of Puyallup who are homeless.
I would support the development of a fund, such as, you know, a housing fund to encourage developments and others that are funded by the state and/or federal government, possibly even use a tax incentive perhaps. And I'd be open to hear other possibilities as well. And so, that would be something that I would be in favor for, for the city of Puyallup.
Thank you. And Joe, same question, please.
So, one of the things that I'm very excited about is community land trusts. They've existed for decades, but are now just happening in Pierce County. They are a powerful tool to get affordable housing units to the market very quickly. The city of Puyallup and Pierce County should partner to make this happen. It builds generational wealth, and it keeps housing affordable in over generations. So, people who can't imagine ever being able to own a home could pass on a paid home to their kids. That means generation after generation becomes better off. Housing cooperatives can combine affordable housing and economic development to add jobs in the area. The community land trust model makes the construction and development phases as lean as possible, which means that it's flexible and it's fast. So, I think that the city should start looking at groups like the Tacoma Community Land Trust and others immediately so that we can get more housing on the market.
Thank you. Joe, you're first for this question, which I think is our last question. I'm not seeing any from the audience. Joe, please describe the appropriate role in providing affordable housing and services in Puyallup of the Pierce County Housing Authority of nonprofit private developers of affordable housing and of nonprofit service providers. Sort of a mouthful, but what is or should be the city's relationship or partnership with them, and in what way?
So, we should absolutely collaborate to understand the tapestry of services that are available right now. The city can fund housing providers and service providers when appropriate and should always strive to remove barriers to success. We should all work together to make affordable housing happen, and it needs to be done now. People need this right now, because homeownership is the cornerstone of the American dream. And these are big problems that require comprehensive and collaborative solutions. Puyallup can't do it alone, so we need to take a look at partnering so we can all be successful.
Thank you. And Dennis, for that question, please.
I would be willing to look at all aspects of partnership to create an affordable real estate in our city. I think Puyallup could be a coordinating entity for a number of these groups, talking with nonprofits and even homeless providers that provide housing. It's such an integral part, and I think that we could lead the way in our county to be able to provide a partnership. It's so, and to simply put, it's just so important right now and more than ever. And I think that by working together and having a collaborative partnership with those that are developers and builders, I think that we could do a really good job here at Puyallup that is accountable, economical, and really puts the right infrastructure in place to be able to work with all of these services. And I think that we could do that if it was done appropriately.
Thank you. That was our last question. Now, it's time for closing statements. One minute per candidate. They will be in reverse ballot order, so we will begin with Joe, followed by Dennis.
All right. Thank you again for hosting this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to answer questions and to talk to the public. This is what it's all about, hearing people's concerns and letting them know kind of what we think about the various issues going on, especially in downtown Puyallup. Again, I'm extremely excited to be running for office. My three core values are integrity, transparency, and accountability, and I'm very excited to bring them to this council seat. And I can't wait to be your next city council member. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Dennis, please.
Thank you so much again for hosting these forums. They are a useful tool for those that are watching and those that are wanting to get more informed. You know, one of the big things that our campaign is big about is safety, as well as solving the homeless issue in our city, as well as the revitalization and infrastructure of our downtown corridor. And we want to see affordable real estate come into Puyallup where it allows folks to break down barriers that we are facing in today's housing market. So, I want to thank you all for tuning in tonight, and I appreciate your support. And be sure to get out and vote before November 2nd.
Thank you both. To the audience, you should have received your ballot and your voter's pamphlet. Be sure to vote early and no later than November 2nd. I would like to thank the candidates, Maureen Fife from the Affordable Housing Consortium, the timekeeper, Terry Baker, the Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters, and the Affordable Housing Consortium for sponsoring this forum. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Oklahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. identities, and current realities. You can see other League of Women Voters candidate forums at www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Be sure to read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org where you'll see candidates answering questions, answering the same questions. Go to the candidates' websites and do all that you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before November 2nd. Thank you all very much.